Good evening, I'd now like to call the meeting to order. I'm Sherri Edgar, the municipal clerk of the town of Midland, and I would like to welcome you to the inaugural meeting of council for the 2022-2026 term. Please rise if you are able as council is piped into the council chambers. This will be followed by the singing of Oh Canada for the 2022-2026, or sorry, from the the Bay Sound Children's Choir. Thank you. I would like to call on David Deneau, Chief Administrative Officer of the Town of Midland, to provide the land acknowledgement.
Thank you to Mr. Miller and the Bay Sound Choir. That was a wonderful introduction. The choir will be back later, which will be wonderful as well. I would like to thank the clerk, as I mentioned, council-elect, the last time we'll refer to his council-elect, friends, neighbors, guests from around North Simcoe, both in the chambers and online. Thank you for joining us. The town of Midland recognizes that it is located on land, which is the traditional and treaty territory of the Adneshnap people, now known as the Chickewa Tri-council comprised of Bosley First Nation, Rama First Nation, and the Georgina Island First Nation. This territory within the pre-confederation Treaty V and Treaty 16 and included within the Williams Treaties of 1923. The town of Midland recognizes that is located on land, which is the traditional territory of the Huron-Wendat and historic homelands of the Métis, and that our town is home to a large and diverse community of indigenous people.
Thank you, Mr. Deneau. I would now like to call on Patricia Minogue and her helper Shane of the Bosley First Nation to offer the smudging ceremony.
We want it, we want like you to smudge everybody, trust me. It would take too long. So if you just, when you see Shane going by, just bring that smoke into you and that medicine in, take a deep breath. Smell all that goodness come in and relieve yourself and let all of those bad thoughts, bad feelings, whatever you managed to do during the day that didn't feel good, know that this medicine is here to help relieve you of that. So in our way, we always smudge and it doesn't make us perfect, it doesn't make us 100% well, but it makes us better than we were before. And in this way, in our indigenous way, our First Nations Métis and Inuit way, we put spirit first. And that's the human being way. This isn't, this isn't just in a schnabe way, this is a human being way. And if we can all understand that God created, gifted us unconditional love, and if all of our stories are true, then that must mean that all of our prayers go to the same place. Uh huh. How? So when I say that, everyone will say, "How?" I agree. That's how we say, "I agree with you." And you're not agreeing with me, you're agreeing with spirit and in our relationship, our spirit relationship with each other. Because I'm no greater than anybody else. I just have a really good memory and I've been learning a very long time. I've had teachers, you know, whack it into me, so to speak, with an eagle, and it was an eagle feather and with tobacco. So Shane's coming around again. I'm just going to offer a few words with our first medicine, asthma. Tobacco unprocessed. And you can offer your own thoughts and prayers and petitions as I'm offering mine. Because we all know that all our prayers go to the same place. Yes? Aha. I offer these prayers, Creator God, as we are gathered here to celebrate and acknowledge this tremendous day for the council, the mayor and city council, not chief and council, mayor and council. I ask for blessings for everybody. I ask for blessings for those people standing up there. Give them strength. Give them focus, give them determination. Let them know that they are loved by everybody. That's why they're sitting there. Help them to see beyond their own little spaces and connect with everybody in a spiritual way so that we can walk together and build those bridges together in hope and love. I ask that for everybody that's gathered here today and those that wanted to come that couldn't. I also ask on behalf of all of our people that may be struggling illness, God Creator, send them our love and our blessings. I ask that you think of our homeless. Send them our love and our blessings. I ask for those communities that have no drinking water or food to eat. I ask you send them our blessings, even our loved ones. God created their institutions and in the jails. Let them know they're not forget, they're forgotten. Let them know that we still love them when we think of them. And all those that families that have struggled, struggled during this time of COVID. Let them know that we're learning and we are trying to make a better place and that we will continue to put our hearts and our minds together to continue to smooth the way to build those healthy bridges. I ask on behalf of all of us, God Creator, gathered here. How, I am just super, super grateful and I'm not gone into my ugly cry, but I am so very honored to be here tonight to help welcome you into your new positions. And I look forward to seeing you and I hope we can do more. Have it on good authority that more is going to come for us in our communities and that we will be celebrating down the streets of Midland, you know, in our way and how we do. So again, thank you so much for the honor of coming here. I'll cry over here.
I'd like to take this time to thank you Patricia and Shane for participating or leading us in that ceremony. It was very touching. Thank you. At this time, I will now proceed to administer the declaration of office to the members of the Town and Midland Council for the 2022-2026 term. I will call on each member of council individually to approach the podium to take their declaration of office and oath of allegiance. I will then ask for their signature. Counselor Post.
I, Beth Post, having been elected to the office of counselor in the Corporation of the Town of Midland, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly faithfully impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt or any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to His Majesty the King, Charles III, or the reigning sovereign for the time being. And I make this promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is the same force and effect as if made under oath.
Sir Bill Meredith.
I, Bill Meredith, having been elected to the office of counselor in the Corporation of the Town of Midland, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly faithfully and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt or in any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to His Majesty, King Charles III, on the reigning sovereign for the time being. And I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
Counselor Catherine McDonald.
I, Catherine McDonald, having been elected to the office of counselor in the Corporation of the Town of Midland, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly faithfully and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt or in any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interests, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to His Majesty, King Charles III, or the reigning sovereign for the the time being. As I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it is true and knowing that it is the same force and effect as if made under oath.
Right. Counselor Jamie Lee Ball.
I, Jamie Lee Ball, having been elected to the office of counselor in the Corporation of the Town of Midland, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truthfully faithfully and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt or in any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interests, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to His Majesty, King Charles III, or the reigning sovereign for the time being. And I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as it made under oath.
Counselor Jim Downer.
I, Jim Downer, having been elected to the office of counselor in the Corporation of the Town of Midland, do solemnly and promise and declare that I will truly faithfully and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt or in any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to His Majesty, King Charles III, or the reigning sovereign for the time being. And I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
Counselor Roberta Bald.
I, Roberta Bald, having been elected to the office of counselor in the Corporation of the Town of Midland, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly faithfully and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt or in any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to His Majesty, King Charles III, or the reigning sovereign for the time being. And I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath. and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
Councillor Sheldon East.
I, Sheldon East, have been elected to the office of councillor in the Corporation of the Town of Midland, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly faithfully and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to His Majesty, King Charles III, or the reigning sovereign for the time being. And I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
I will now call upon Deputy Mayor Jack Conton to take his declaration of office and oath of allegiance.
I, Jack Conton, have been elected to the office of deputy mayor in the Corporation of the Town of Midland, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly faithfully and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to His Majesty, King Charles III, or the reigning sovereign for the time being. And I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it is to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
I will now call upon Mayor Bill Gordon to take his declaration of office and oath of allegiance and to receive the chain of office.
I have a frog in my throat. I, Bill Gordon, having been elected to the office of mayor of the Corporation of the Town of Midland, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly faithfully and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will faithfully and bear true allegiance, I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to His Majesty, King Charles III, or the reigning sovereign for the time being. And I make this solemn promise and declaration consciously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
All members have now been duly sworn. It is my pleasure to present the 2022-2026 Council for the Corporation of the Town of Midland. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. You've done a fantastic job. I've been using the word humbling a lot lately in the past couple of months, but I, there's no better word for what I see tonight and the participation and how nice it was to have some prayer and some spiritual guidance back in the council chambers. It's something that kind of vanished many years ago for a variety of reasons and reserved for very special occasions like this. So, Chumigwich for coming tonight. I'll have more to say after. I'd like to welcome everyone here and thank you for attending this evening to celebrate this very special event with us. We have a number of special guests in attendance tonight, including our mayors-elect and councillors-elect from our surrounding municipalities, close partners of ours. We have our North Simcoe CAOs, equally important as they administer the will of council in each of those municipalities and ultimately deliver the service that we've all come to love and respect in these communities. I also would like to welcome Lesley Stroud, representing MPP Jill Dunlop this evening, and our leadership from both Chimnissing or Bozulay First Nation and the Georgian Bay Métis Council with us tonight. Now, due to the large number in attendance this evening, I'm unable to individually acknowledge each of you. However, please know that your presence here has not gone unnoticed and is very much appreciated. I do look forward to speaking with you in our our little reception that follows this. I'd now like to call on Father Michael Knox for Martyr Shrine for a prayer of dedication.
Jemendido. Dieu du Puisson. Creator God, our Father, we give thanks for the gift of life, the gift of creation all around us sustained by your spirit and love. And we give thanks for those present here in this chamber and especially for those encircled, bound together in a chain of office in dedication to the service of God's people. Sworn tonight to a life of service, each of them have come with gifts made in your image and your abundant love that they bring forth in their lives of the past and now of the present. And they place them before you in oaths taken and promises made for the greater service of your kingdom and this country. We ask for your spirit to be upon them, to bless their minds that dignified by the crown, they may truly be efficient. Give them reason. Let their minds be open to listening to the voices of others and making good choices based on their lives of love, of family, and meaning. Bless their souls, the seat of wisdom, that beyond reason, they may look to the greater lives around them and the mysteries of love. That their hearts may always turn to the poor and those in greatest need. That their hearts may always be open by the inspiration of your light to the realities of the world around them, finding struggles and joys and answering with sincerity, with truth. Bless their bodies to give them good strength for the great tasks that they have taken upon themselves at the service of others. Keep them in good health and always ready to rise to your need and to the service of your people. We extend this grace and pray, O Lord, that the families that have strengthened them and brought them to where they now sit may also be blessed, that their homes be blessed, and that as their hands extend beyond this chamber in reason, in faith, in love and in action, this community, this municipality, this town may also be blessed as we grow all the more together towards a greater desire of peace, unity, prosperity, hope, safety, and a civilization of love. And we make this prayer through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you very much. If I could now you direct your attention to the screens above, I'd like to present a recorded greeting from our MP, Adam Chambers.
Hi, everyone. Adam Chambers here. I'm sorry I can't be with you tonight to celebrate your recent elections to the Midland Town Council. All of you expressed an interest in working together to make Midland the best it can be. I look forward to working with all of you over the next four years to make our community welcoming and making sure that we're delivering for our citizens in Midland. Looking forward to meeting you all soon.
Thank you for that. I'd also like to call Lesley Stroud, who will be bringing greetings on behalf of our MPP Jill Dunlop.
Good evening, everyone. It is my privilege to join you all this evening on behalf of Jill Dunlop, MPP for Simcoe North. MPP Dunlop wishes she could be here. However, with the legislature sitting, she is required to be at Queen's Park. MPP Dunlop has asked me to extend her sincere congratulations to all newly-elected, acclaimed, and re-elected Town of Midland council members. This inauguration ceremony marks the beginning of your commitment to serve the Town of Midland, to continue to build on work previously done and to work together to ensure a robust and resilient community. I know that MPP Dunlop looks forward to working with you on provincial issues and opportunities to rebuild Ontario's economy and support rural growth and development on many levels to benefit families and businesses. Thank you in advance for your leadership. Working together with vision and determination, we will achieve much success. On behalf of MPP Dunlop and the Province of Ontario, congratulations, and I wish you much success in the Town of Midland. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we do enjoy in this municipality a very close partnership, working with our MP and MPP. And I do look forward to continuing that through this term. I have the pleasure of sitting with both of them typically the first Friday of every month for a breakfast at Mom's Restaurant. All of you are welcome to join. It's a fantastic opportunity to understand and engage the challenges that we're facing and a great way to network. This thing's heavier than it looks. When they, when they talk about the weight of office, I guess, you know, Councillor Downer is well aware of, well aware what that's feeling like. So, I certainly look to this fantastic council you've built for guidance and peer support and to help with the heavy lifting in the next four years. I have prepared some words I'd like to share with you and so I don't so I don't trip over my tongue. I'm going to read them tonight, so pardon me if I'm not keeping constant eye contact with you. Thank you, Madam Clerk, and good evening. Bonsoir. Megwich to all members of council, your families, to our staff, members of the public, and all of our distinguished guests. I'm delighted that you've joined us tonight as we welcome our new municipal council for the next four years. Thank you as well to all the members of the previous council who dedicated themselves to serving our town over the last term. Your service was appreciated, and each successive council builds on the hard work of our previous councils. We are ready to continue that work with a steady hand on the wheel of the good ship Midland as we continue our course towards growth, health, safety, and prosperity. I am humbled to have been elected as your mayor and that you've entrusted me with this honour and responsibility. Like each mayor before me in our rich history, I'm proud to lead a team of enthusiastic and driven councillors who share the vision of preserving our small-town charm while responsibly managing our growth to accommodate our families, our neighbours, visitors, and newcomers alike. I pledged to lead a more collaborative council and to welcome and encourage our residents to participate and engage in our decision-making. As our rich, culturally diverse community grows and we plan for our future, we have many big decisions ahead. I believe that all of you play an integral role in that future, and we will ensure that you have ample opportunities to do so. Together, we're going to face financial pressure together. We're going to face the emerging of the global pandemic coupled with inflation and the rising cost of living. We have pressures on our healthcare system, our mental healthcare systems, funding shortfalls for social services, lack of housing, general unaffordability, addiction, poverty, and homelessness, to name but a few. However, there is good news, and that's that we're not in this alone. We have a strong partnership with our neighbouring municipalities, our county, the provincial and federal governments as well. We'll build on those partnerships and we'll look for ways to work even more closely to align our service delivery, achieve savings, and the efficiencies that working together can bring. We will get past these challenges, and I believe you have elected a council that's ready, willing, and able to navigate through the perils that lie ahead. I want to extend my sincere appreciation to the town clerk and the town staff who coordinated this election. I want to extend my sincere appreciation to the town clerk and the town staff who coordinated this election. This was a new way of voting for Midland, and the feedback has been very encouraging, in particular with the assistance provided by our staff in this very room. Bravo to the residents of Midland who braved this change to telephone internet voting and the elimination of wards, and you built this new council with a voter turnout far greater than many larger communities in Ontario. I want to congratulate all the candidates for their courage and determination in running for municipal service. This was an opportunity for all of us to gain insight on what matters to our town and also to share our visions for its future. I extend my sincere thanks to our families, my family, our friends and supporters who encouraged, and their efforts kept us focused on our goals throughout this campaign. I also look forward to the new term of council as we work together with our capable town staff, our North Simcoe partners, and most importantly, the community to build a better Midland. Finally, I'd like to thank my wife Donna, my daughter Laura, and son Brian for their love, their encouragement, and wisdom over the past term and throughout this campaign. Tomorrow, the hard work begins. I thank you again for choosing me as mayor, and I will work tirelessly to continue to earn that trust. Thank you, Marcy Chimacwetch. I'd now like to call on Deputy Clerk, please.
Thank you, Mayor Gordon. At this time, I'd like to invite Mrs. Donna Gordon to come forward for a special presentation in recognition of the sacrifice you two will be making over the next four years as you support your husband, Mayor Bill Gordon, in his new role. The town's deputy clerk, Sarah Cathcart, will make the presentation.
There's absolutely no way I could do this without her. Twenty-seven years, dear. On behalf of council, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the special guests that have contributed to this evening's inaugural ceremony. I'd like to thank Ivan Miller for piping us into the chamber tonight, and a huge thank you to the Bass Sound Children's Choir for their participation in singing Oh Canada, and we look forward to their performance shortly, if you give us hope. I'd like to thank Patricia and Shane Minag for the smudging ceremony. And finally, a heartfelt thank you to Father Knox for his prayer and dedication. We need that help. Thank you. I'll now invite the choir back in. We were just hoping you'd come and give us some hope. Fantastic. Thanks a lot, kids. You are the future and you're largely the reason why we're going to do it with the next four years. So thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, this is one of these short agendas, not like our usual council meetings. I'd like to thank all of you for attending. It means so much to us that you came out. Please join us at the Sports and Rec Center upstairs, which is accessibly accessed through an elevator for a nice reception. We're going to be running from seven thirty to ten. There's some light fare beverages and an opportunity for our new council to finally get to talk, because there wasn't a spot on the agenda tonight for each of you. So we'll be ungagging them at the reception, and I look forward to having all of them get to meet and greet with folks yourselves and the public that hopefully joins us as we kick off this new and exciting year. Our first official meeting is December seventh, I believe, so that's when we get our draft budget. So the heavy lifting begins. So once again, everybody, from the bottom of my heart, on behalf of Midland's new council, thank you so much for coming tonight, and to our friends and neighbors from neighboring municipality, we'll be talking soon. Thank you. Good night.